Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad to hear today.
We are. We're really excited to have you here and we're excited that Julie and Colin have joined us today. Hey guys.
Hi everyone.
How you doing?
So hey, today we are talking about a feature that is going to save you time and might even help you get more customers and help your customers get better results and get better connected with Young Living. Today we are talking about how you can turn your most common frequently asked questions from customers and leads and turn that into a resource that allows people to start discovering information and finding answers themselves on your own website. This is a feature that will save you time and of course will get your people more independent and more educated on what they need to know to get the most out of Young Living and to get started with you if they haven't yet. So today we're going to get into some resources that are created for you. We're going to talk about why we should put together an FAQ for our website. We should, we're also going to talk about some best practices for it and we've got some exciting updates to the platform to share. So without further ado, we're going to pop out a video while you're here. Go ahead and get into chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. We're so excited to have you here today. As always, on Thursdays where we host this live opportunity to get together and grow. This is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session, the opportunity to work together as Young Living brand partners to work smarter, not harder, to use Get Oiling to get that done. And of course, to learn some tips and tricks to help you grow your Young Living brand partner business. So today we're going to talk about how we can turn our customer questions into business growth by curating and sharing frequently asked questions on our website. So today we will get into first, some very exciting feature updates from Greg. Greg has been hard at work making improvements to our system as he always does. We'll get you up to speed on some of those updates here on the call. We will also talk about what it looks like to have an FAQ section, a frequently asked question section on your website and talk about how that can save you some time, simplify your business. We'll talk about where to include these frequently asked questions for the biggest possible impact and how you can set up and continually improve upon your own FAQ section. So your customers are always informed and confident on what to do next. And we have even created a starting point for you, your very own FAQ. I actually sent it out to you guys via email. We'll get into what this looks like here in just a little bit. But yeah, we're going to get into putting this onto your website. I'll show you exactly how to get it done and to make it your own today. And of course, as always, on these Thursday calls, we are always offering an opportunity for you to get live help. So if you have questions, go ahead and add those to the Q and A. You've got a panel here who are experts in Get Oiling, who are all brand partners and know how to help you out. So if you go to the Q and A section live here on Zoom, we can get help for you. If you are watching this as a replay, come join us. Ask us questions live. Let's work together. This is free to everyone who is a Young Living brand partner that's interested in working smarter, not harder. GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession to sign up for these live calls. If you'd like to reserve time on an upcoming call like this one, you can do that as well and it's totally free. GetOiling.com/websitereview will allow you, when you sign up there, to select a future Thursday noon, US Eastern Time call. It's when we hold these calls in the second half of these calls, so at about 12:30 Eastern Time. That is when we get into live help and Q and A. And if you reserve a spot, that time is yours. All right? So we can work together on things that you are trying to fix on your website, or you're just trying to figure out where to get started, or how to get something uploaded, or whatever that project might be. This is an opportunity to get one-on-one hands-on help here with our community. And if you would like to hand off the work that you want to get done, you can go to GetOiling.com/concierge. That's where you can go to learn about our team, see the projects they've completed, and of course get a request to quote your own. All right. So before we get into today's content, I'd like to pass the floor over to Greg, who's going to share with us some really exciting updates that he has made to some of the features in our system here in the last week or two.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ashley. Let me share my screen here. Okay, so there's been three updates I want to share with you. One of them is in the page builder and two of them are in the calendar booking system. So I'll start with the page builder one. There's now the ability to create device-specific elements. So in other words, you can have a headline that shows up differently on mobile than it does on desktop. This has come up recently, which is partly why we ended up adding this. For example, somebody, somebody had a really headline that looked like, well, it needed a larger font on desktop and it could look nice. But then on the, on mobile device, it was so, the word was so long, it like pushed up the screen. So let me show you how this works. I'm just going to grab some theme here. This one has a nice headline on it and I'll show you how that, how that can work here. So probably the easiest way to do this, well, first of all, I'll show you where it is. There's this new element visibility section here. You can turn each device on just like you can with the section visibility. You know, there's these section visibility icons here as well for the entire section, but you can now do this on an element-by-element basis. And when you combine it with some of these features like making a copy, which is what I'll do here, you could easily make different headline changes or maybe even different sub-headline changes for each device. So let's, I'll just say this is my desktop version. What I'm going to do is, I don't know, let's pick a, make this one bigger or something like that. And maybe the mobile one should be smaller. Let's do something like that. And it'll just change the font. So it's a lot easier to determine that I've made the change. So right now we've got this one here. So they're, they're both visible on all devices right now, which is obviously what we don't want. But let's say this is my desktop version. So I'll make a small screen, large screen. I'll leave those checked, unchecked, mobile and portrait. You can see the little dot shows up here saying that's been modified. And now I'll come down here and I'll just make sure that mobile and portrait are selected. So now if I come in here and do a phone preview, this one, there's an animation delay on here on this specific theme. It takes a second for it to pop up. But so you can see now the mobile version has this other font and so does the tablet because that's what I had selected. But then if I go to the desktop version, you can see the font is now different. It swaps the headlines based on the device, which is pretty awesome. And you could do, it's, you know, not just headlines. You could do it with anything. Modify the element visibility, then you can, and it's nice because like in this one, for example, there's a video in the background of this. And putting another video in another section probably with a different headline would look kind of weird. I think it would make the, the video like broken up and whatnot. So keeping it all in the same section oftentimes has some advantages. So that is feature number one, pretty cool with the, the ability to like have different device-specific headlines and sub-headlines and content and all that. The other change I want to show you now is in the booking type. When you have a booking link that you're sending out to somebody, what I wanted, this has been a huge request since, you know, over the last month or two, people are off, you know, they're wanting to book a call, but they don't have, you know, it's only certain availability. Well, oftentimes there's situations where you want to book a call that is off the schedule. Like, okay, this isn't normally my hours, but I've got this, this person, there may be in another continent or something and they, you know, completely different time zone. And I need to be able to override my booking link and just kind of get it in there. Well, now there's this override link here, which you can click on that. And then it adds this new checkbox here, allow booking times when I'm not available. And it just says admin only for your own purpose. So now you can see there's a lot more dates available. Previously it was just the 31st, but now literally every time is available from now going forward. So you know, it starts at midnight and goes till 11:45 PM, basically gives you every time slot in the day that you want for that. So you can, you can do that. You can create a custom, custom schedule then. It does not check for any availability. So it'll just pop it on there whenever you want to. If even if you have a schedule conflict on one of your calendars, it will allow you to book it. So that's, that's useful if you're in a call with somebody and you want to book a call and it's not normally something that's available. This is also available inside the contact manager. If you have a person in there, the link there does do this override thing as well. So you can have that feature too. The third change here is related to the call packages. So if you're not familiar with the call packages, those are a way of creating a series of, you know, people using for a lot of different things. They could be calls, they could be in-person sessions, but basically people will buy a package of calls or sessions or time with you. And the system keeps track of it automatically. Okay, so they bought three calls. Now it will automatically let them, you know, once they buy it, it can add it to their contact. And then it'll just keep track of the number of calls that are available. Well, every once in a while, something comes up, like there was something scheduled, you know, personally, you need to add one or for some reason the person wanted to, they terminated it early for some reason and whatever. There's all sorts of reasons why you would need to modify the number of calls once it's assigned. So if I go over to the contact manager, you can see this is just the contact manager down below here, you know, where there's the call packages section. This is a test contact of mine. You can see it's got an open call package here and there's a new little pencil icon that shows up here. So now I can just click on this. Oh, well, okay, maybe this person has one fewer. Then it just updates the number of calls that are on the package. So you can easily modify that. And this is only for those that are assigned to that person. This doesn't affect the general booking link. You know, that whatever your original was, like this one apparently was a one-session package. Now I've upped it to four. But you can, you can do that. That also will show here under your booked meetings. If you go to book meetings and then you go to open call packages, that will also show up here. And then you can just, you can see the contact and either click through and look at what they have, or you can just edit the number of calls that they have here too. So those are the changes this week. All three of those are from requests that we've received. So thank you for sending those over. We're excited about these changes and hopefully it'll help you streamline a few things. Back to you, Ashley.
All right. Yeah, let's get into it, you guys. Excited to actually first head over into the chat. Let us know that you are excited about these changes that Greg has put into place. I am certainly thrilled to see these abilities to override. That is certainly really exciting for us here. Let me make sure, can we actually see my, here we go. Here's my guy right here. Perfect. All right. Let's get back into this. So today we are going to be getting into FAQs. So getting these both gathered and curated so that you can use them. And then of course, putting them into use on your website. So first, let's talk about why we need an FAQ section, right? So this is an important thing to have on your website, first and foremost, because you're probably already answering these questions. Or if you're newer to the business, these are the questions that you want to be able to answer, but maybe you don't know how to answer confidently in a one-on-one setting just yet, right? So this is something that's really useful for you to have, both as you are getting your feet wet with growing the business and certainly a huge time saver for you, the larger your team grows, right? So the questions that you get asked most often are going to be the ones that you're going to want to have inside of an FAQ section. And if you aren't someone who is getting questions asked yet, then these are going to be the ones that come most logically. What are the things that we might assume people to ask, right? Also really importantly, we want to make sure that our customers are confident that they can find the answers that they're looking for without necessarily requiring us to be the conduit, to be the go-between. We want to cultivate a culture of independence and curiosity and empowerment. So people can go and find the answers that they need, whether that be questions about Young Living and how it works, all the way through to products that they could use for different purposes, right? We want customers to feel empowered and a well-placed frequently asked question section on your website is going to reduce the repeated questions that you might be getting and allow your customers to find answers on their own, freeing up your time and creating a better experience for your customers. And of course, freeing up a whole lot of time for you, the larger your team becomes. So let's talk about where we will use these frequently asked questions to help your customers and your team. First things first, we can add an FAQ section to your Why I Chose Young Living page. Now, if you don't have a page like this, I'll show you where to get one here in just a bit. But this would be a great place for you to put these frequently asked questions and their answers on a page where someone is already learning about Young Living products. And I'm a big proponent of using a Why I Chose Young Living page to both introduce Young Living, your testimony, your story, maybe your hero products. And then of course, these questions that someone might need to have resolved before choosing to move forward, trying a product or even getting on a call with you to see what might work best for them. We want to include those FAQs in our customer vault as well, so that your customers can get answers to common questions quickly. And you might find again, the larger your team becomes, the bigger your online presence may become. You might want to do two separate versions of this. And if you are someone who are, who's hosting classes or workshops, adding some FAQs to your registration page can actually help you to improve the number of people who sign up, right? So people who might ask, is this recorded or will you be offering this at another date in the future because I'm interested, right? Things like that could get someone who maybe wouldn't otherwise say yes, to go ahead and say yes and have them become a lead because these questions are answered there on the page. And then of course, if you are someone who uses Get Oiling to sell coaching or courses, you can also include a small FAQ section on your sales pages to address common concerns before someone signs up and purchases. Now, let's talk about the really important sort of philosophy behind using an FAQ section on a page and how this sort of connects to some of the best and most duplicable strategies you can use to grow your Young Living business. And, and that, that overriding philosophy there is that we are not the teacher, we are the pointer, right? We are not the resource, we point to the resource. So instead of always answering questions yourself, if someone comes to you and says, well, how does essential rewards or how does loyalty rewards work? Instead of you answering that question, show them where Young Living's own website answers the question, right? Show them how they can go to the source, because when they realize the source has even more to provide them in the way of information, they will start to default to going to the source for information, right? And that is really what we are here to do as brand partners, is not to have these people become our customers, but for us to help them become empowered customers who love Young Living, right? We are the conduit for that, but we are not that. Young Living is what we are trying to help them to build a relationship with. And it's through our relationship that that becomes possible, right? So the key is to point. It's not to deliver on a silver platter, the exact answer to the question that someone just asked you. It's to gently show them that the best way for them to get the answers they're looking for is to consult the source material, which is not you, right? Which is Young Living. So that's really the, the whole philosophy behind this and what makes this work. And customers ultimately, like I just mentioned, it's your relationship, which is the reason why they purchase in the first place, but they stay because they trust Young Living. So we need to help them cultivate that relationship. And Young Living's website has so much information, detailed product pages, policies, educational content. And, and as I speak to you here today, they even have little mini courses on different subject matter pieces. So your job is to point people to the right place where Young Living can tell them what they need to know, right? Okay, so let's, let me make sure I've got all of that here. Sorry. Okay, yeah. So let's talk about how to build and organize our frequently asked questions page. So the first thing we're going to do is to track our repeated questions. What are you getting asked the most often? Or what questions come up for you? Maybe you're new to this and you don't have a team yet, right? So anytime you have a question, maybe think back to the questions that you had when you first got started, you should be writing those down. And of course, again, if you are unclear on where to start, we've already done this for you. So it's totally fine. We will, I'll show you how you can actually use the cheat code I've created for you if you feel a little lost. Now, if you are someone who's answering a lot of questions, write those frequent questions down and save the responses that you give, right? And then use a Trello board. Now, if you have been on some of our more recent trainings where we've talked about a swipe file and planning your content, you can use that for this as well. Maybe create a new column in your Trello board for your frequently asked questions and responses, so that you can build something like this out or to add to the one that I'm providing to you here today. You can also use a notes app for this. This will allow you to never have to rewrite the same answer. And then we want to make sure that we're formatting our FAQ for easy use. First question, how do I join Young Living? And the answer is, learn how to become a customer or a brand partner here, and then you can link to the Young Living website, right? Let's talk about adding and maintaining. So our starter frequently asked questions is already built for you. That's something I sent out to you guys via resource bundle link in our email that went out to you today. And our team, I guess if you guys can, we need to get a chance, if you could pop that from our Slack here into the chat and I'll make sure it's in the description as well. There is a resource bundle. We're going to be going, going over here shortly that has a done-for-you FAQ section for whatever page you would like to use it on. We're going to use the copy-in feature to add that to your Why I Chose Young Living page or really any other page that you prefer to use it on in your account. And then as new questions come up, we're going to add those to your original FAQ page in Get Oiling, so that it always stays up to date. And when you update it, be sure to delete the old versions and copy in new. So before we, I lose you here, because that was a lot, let's take a quick look at what this looks like. Here, let me pop right over here. Let me show you what this looks like. I'm going to show you how to claim, if this will let me open, there we go. How to claim your, your resource bundle. There we go. I'm in Jane's account right now. What this is, it's a page, but it is a page that you'll be inserting into other pages. So it's a section. I'm going to claim the bundle and then I'm going to go take a look at it. And here it is. And we've actually got so much here for you to start with. What makes Young Living different? What is loyalty rewards? What are essential oils? What are their benefits? Are they safe? How do I use them? How do I get started? What's Ningxia red and is it right for me? Are common household cleaning products really dangerous? How can essential oils support emotional wellbeing and how do I get started with Young Living? There's so many things you can do with this, but the cool thing is when you pop these open, and actually let's look at this from a preview perspective here. We pop these open, these actually go to Young Living's own pages, which is pretty, pretty cool here. Oops, sorry. I didn't want to. Not supposed to click off that link there when I'm in a preview mode. Here we go. So you can actually see that these are all here and the cool thing is, is that these are linked up with your Young Living member number. So if somebody decides to go off and start purchasing and learning, et cetera, your link is included, which is pretty, pretty cool. Let me show you what that means. If I click right here on where it says quality commitment, you can actually see here, you've got your member number and like the sponsor and enroller information is connected there. So if somebody goes from this link and then goes over to purchase a page, something on a page like Ningxia or Thieves or what have you, that will be your customer. And that's the case for every single one of the links that are included here. So you can see that we have got, and this is an FAQ section here. And you can actually go in and edit this if you want to change whether or not this header stays open or closed. The style you can change if you want a different background color, you want a different colored font, you can make all of those changes here as well. If you want to add something new, click add section and then you can give it a new header. So you can say, why did you, well, actually you probably answered this on the page. What's another question that someone might ask frequently? Perhaps you can ask, is this available in my country? And here you can go and find ideally, information from Young Living directly. And you can allow them to go and click and learn the answer, right? The whole point here is to not deliver some grand in-depth answer to a question, but to give them access to the place where they can go to learn more, right? You want to give them just enough. Obviously you don't want to deflect and give a non-answer, but what you do want to do is provide something that is contextual, that has the, the dual purpose of providing them with information, but then also connecting them with the resource that they can consult on an ongoing basis. All right. So I've claimed this and let's just pretend that I've made the modifications to it that I'd like. So let me go back over here to pages and I'm going to find my Why Young Living page. I'm going to type in why, because I know that that's a part of the name. Here we go. Here's my Why Young Living page. I would like to put this Q and A or this FAQ section onto this page. So here's all of my information on my Why Young Living page. I'm going to go add section right here. And I'm going to click copy in another page and I'm going to go find that Q and A. Here's our FAQ. There we go. Copy in. And you can see that it is now right here where it was not previously on this page. Now, as you are making changes to this on an ongoing basis, do it in the section that you claimed, right? That's this one right here. It looks just like this. It's a page by itself, right? Make your edits here and then just go over to the pages that you want to update it on and then delete it from that page, right? Delete those two sections and then just go copy in the new version, right? So just copy that guy back in whenever you want to make those updates. And you could put this, that was a public-facing page, my Why Young Living page. You could also put this in a start here page inside of a vault. It's also a very useful place to put this as well. Now, if you would like to get your own Why Young Living page, let me show you where you can go to get it. This is in the Success Academy right here, under online resources and courses. The Brand My Business Workshop is a completely free entire course that will allow you, in short, easy-to-follow steps, to create your own custom brand partner website using done-for-you templates. I even show you how to come up with what to say and where to put it and how to make modifications. And these are all very small bite-sized steps, short videos and done-for-you resources as a starting point. If you have never had a website before, or you're just getting started with creating something more custom, this is where you want to go. This is going to get you all of the resources that you're looking for, if you want that Why I Chose Young Living page. Let's go take a quick look at it. Also, I've, I've embedded the frequently asked questions into this new version. Let me show you what this looks like. Essentially what we're doing here on this page is we are introducing Young Living, right? So this is where we say, here's why I chose it. I put a little bit of my own personal story here. I share my hero product here. So here's the product that started it all. Maybe you've got some Ningxia in here. If you ask, you know, you're ready to start your journey, get started, this link is actually coded to go off to Young Living's website, which of course I'm not supposed to click the link here because it's preview. But that's going to go off to the Young Living website, again, coded with your member number already. You don't have to worry about figuring that out. We also have built in here, these are going to go to the different built-in themes that Get Oiling offers. So this will go to the basic oils page. And this is just again, a theme that's inside of your own site. So you can use this. You don't, again, you don't have to code any of this up. It's going to connect to your own Get Oiling site. And here you go. You can actually go in and open up all of these FAQs and see what's here. And again, all of these are ready for you to use right now, right? And of course, you can go in and make any modifications that you wish. And these will, let me actually just show you what this looks like if I save and go view. I'll show you. If we go and we click get started, you can actually see right up here, once it's done loading, that if we go to, here we go. We've got our enroller ID right there and ready to go, right? And that's of course going to be your own, because it is in your Get Oiling system. If I go to, here, let me come back right over here to view this page one more time. That's not what I wanted to do. Sorry about that. All right, here we go. This is the one that I wanted to save and view. So that goes off to the get started. This is going to go off to your built-in themes in Young Living. So here's your body systems theme. If you've got your story and photo uploaded into Get Oiling, it's going to display that there. You'll see some videos and then it will go in and share products. Again, all of these already done for you and Get Oiling ready to go. And, and these will go off to products in Young Living that are coded to you. And here, let me show you. If I go right here, explore starter bundles. Again, you can click it. Check out the link right up here. And of course, we've got, there you go. You can see up there again, sponsor ID and roller ID up here at the top. That plugs in for you. Now, if you need to make modifications to the links that are here, if you want to maybe link to something entirely different, let me go ahead and show you how you can do that. Let's go back over to our Q or FAQ. I'm just going to type in FAQ. Depending on your market or what, what you might want to link to, you may choose to point to something different, right? So if I go to open and edit my accordion here, you can actually see that I've got a number of different links. Maybe you would like to link directly to, let me go find that Ningxia one. This is, this says discover Ningxia red. And this is a US link, an English language US link to this right here, which is pretty cool. It's a discover Ningxia red. And you can actually see that it connected you right there and it's, it's going to basically tell the browser that the visitor is in, that they were sent there by you because of that code that's featured there at the end, right? But if you wanted to change that. But if you wanted to change that, if you wanted to change the link here, if you wanted to add a new link, so let me just go to a Young Living. Maybe I will go to English, Canadian. And I want to look at products. Maybe I want to actually send them specifically to here we go, Starter Bundles and Guides. Maybe I want to send them here, where they can just actually peruse all of these Starter Bundles. I'm going to copy this link right up here. And I'm going to go back over here to the page that I was, here we go, the section I was editing. And this was actually a Starter Bundles, Explore Starter Bundles. Here we go. So what I'm going to do is use, under here, under more miscellaneous, these three dots, I'm going to use the Leaf Link. That's this guy right here. And if you click this and you paste in that URL that I just, this one right here, it's right up here. Paste that in here in the Leaf Link. It's going to give us this right here, which is not super cute. So I'm going to change this. Edit Link, and under Text, I'm going to say Explore Starter Bundles. And if you want to put that little link right there, we can put in an emoji. There we go. And you now have one that's for a different market, completely different market, right? So that is how you can make that change, again, where you want it to be coded to you, right? And you can see here, again, the Enroller ID, the Sponsor ID, it's going to insert your enroller and sponsor information that you have set up inside of your Get Oiling account. Feel free, guys, if you've got questions to go ahead and add them. I'm going to go ahead and start answering some here now. Allison says, can you go over the quick things to change for the weekly tips? I feel like it's two steps. One, change the campaign and the landing page. And two, filter the tips. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I will go over that because it is definitely time to make that change. Trello Board instead of Saved Reply. So Donna K, this is actually, when I mentioned Trello Boards, and let me actually open up, let me open up Trello and just actually walk you through what I'm referring to. And I need to find it first. Bear with me just a second. Let me see. Swipe File, perfect. Okay. So I'm going to switch my share over to my desktop Trello app and show you what I mean by this. Now, it is helpful, for sure, to to utilize Saved Replies in Get Oiling for you to be able to answer questions quickly, right? And so Saved Replies are a great way to do that. But the practice of capturing your saved, those questions that you can put into Saved Replies or into an FAQ section is something that needs to be structured in such a way that you can sustainably do this, right? So if you dropped everything you were doing every time you were asked a question to go and get the answer, and then also go create a piece of content right then and there to answer that question in the future, that's not really sustainable to the rest of your business and how you're working, right? So what I would do is maybe just add a list to your Trello Board. And this Swipe File and Content Planner, I'll show you where to find it in just a second. This is totally free. This is a free tool. I use this to plan our content for our weekly calls and so much more. And this is a great way for you to stay on top of things. So I'm going to actually just make a list called FAQ. And I'm going to add a card. And whatever questions I get asked that I think would be useful to someone else in the future, I'm going to answer them here. So how does loyalty rewards work? And when I'm able to get to it, I will go and figure out what, where the best page is in Young Living that they, that they talk about this, that I can link to, right? And I'll put that information in here. And then I'll gather a few of these, right? And then when I'm ready, I'm going to go and build an FAQ section or add to that FAQ section that I've provided to you guys today. And of course, I could also go and create a Saved Reply doing the same. So I would look at the Trello Board, Donna, as a collection tool. So this is a place for you to store things until you're ready to work on them. Right? So if you have an idea, that's what Swipe is all about. If you have an idea that you are interested in pursuing, that doesn't mean you need to drop everything you're doing and pursue it right this minute. It means that you can go and pop it in so you don't lose it, you don't forget it, add some notes to it if you need some context. And then when you've got some time to work on this as a project, you can go back and do that. Okay? All right. Let's see what else we have in Q and A. And then Allison, I will go into showing you how to to do that. That Young, Why Young Living page, Allison, is in the, I'll go ahead and show you guys both. Let me get back over to here. Okay. So if you want the Why I Chose Young Living page, go to the Success Academy. Go to Online Resources and Courses and go to the Brand My Business Workshop. Okay. So the Brand My Business Workshop is going to give you essential page templates for your website. It's going to have a homepage, an About Me page, your 404 page, your Confirmation page, all the kind of things that you need to have a footer, etc., to have a fully customized website. And that's all going to be right here, including the Why I Chose Young Living page, which you saw a template version of just a little bit ago. So you're going to go to the Brand My Business Workshop for this. It's a brief and complete course that is very step-by-step and easy to follow. Now, for those of you who are interested in that Swipe File, if we go to Live Training and Replays, type in Swipe right here. And this is what you're looking for. So I'm going to just go ahead and copy this link here and pop that into our chat. There we go. I'm going to pop this into our chat so you guys can grab it. But just so you know, for future reference, if you type in the word Swipe into the into the Success Academy search under Live Training and Replays, you'll find that. Okay. So just to do a quick recap of last week, for those of you who have not claimed the Resource Bundle, let me go over to GetOiling.com/ Actually, is it Blog? Here we go. All right. Done-for-you content, Weekly Wellness Tips, How to Plug In and Share. So if I open up this blog post, you can see, this is where you can go to get access to your your Tip Tuesday content, if you are using the Done-for-you content that we've created. If you want to get the Resource Bundle for April, it's just a campaign. And it's right here and ready to go. We also go over the exact steps that you need to follow. So Allison, if you would like a written version of this, it's right here, and it's ready to go. And I actually, oh, the the replay is not here, so forgive me. I'm going to make sure that that is uploaded here. But essentially, what you're doing, and look, this, it's not just written, there are screenshots, right? So there's a couple of things you're going to do. You download the Resource Bundle. You swap out the March Campaign on your landing page, and then you apply the April Campaign to the people who are tagged with Weekly Wellness Tips, right? Those are the two steps. Right? So I'm going to put this link into the chat for you as well, Allison and anybody else who needs it. That blog post is going to give you the exact step-by-step in order. And if you haven't claimed the first bundle from us to get started with the Weekly Wellness Tips series right here, if you don't have the system set up yet, here you go, right here, you can learn more and get the resources here. And that is from last month, where you can actually watch the replay and you can get the resources, which include a landing page. And of course, you don't need the March Campaign anymore because it's about to be April. But that is where you can go to get started with that content. Do let me know if you have any other questions about that or anything else. And yeah, happy to get into those with you. That Trello is not public, but you actually get, Bridget, you get a, your own version of it, right? So if you click right here into this Content Made Easy with Swipe Files, if you open up the description here, you can actually see that I've provided a checklist for you. And and there's a link here where you can actually go into Trello and get your own Swipe File and Content Planner. And what you need to do first is just grab a Trello account for free. And everything that I teach you to do in this series with Swipe File and Content Planning, everything is doable with a totally free Trello account. So there's nothing new that you need to buy. I personally, I use this platform, obviously. I show you guys how to use it all the time. But outside of just this platform by itself, there's very, very little that I ever use or would recommend using. And I definitely recommend Trello or some kind of like Kanban board for organizing your ideas, right? Get Oiling is where you implement your ideas. And it's really helpful to have an organized space for you to be able to capture and store everything so that you can move over into Get Oiling in an organized fashion. It's also an easier way, honestly, to learn how to use the technology that we have. If you're trying to go about a creative process while trying to learn technology at the same time, it's kind of like crossing wires in your brain, and it's why you kind of get really frustrated and frazzle out. Let me say this from experience, because this is not my background, right? Until it was. So if you have your creative ideas captured and you have a plan going into it, the tech truly is intuitive, right? Anytime the tech doesn't feel intuitive, it's at least eighty percent of the time because we're trying to do the tech while we're also trying to figure out the creative stuff, right? So make sure that you use something like Trello to capture the ideas, the images, the writing. Have all of that figured out before you go and start trying to play around with tech. Okay. Donna Marie says, I did not do March. Can I start fresh with April? Is the April bundle standalone with everything I need, or are there pre-steps I need to take? So if you read the the blog post in total, I walk you through that. If you have not claimed or started using these features yet, then you are going to want to take one step, which is to go over to that other blog post and claim that Resource Bundle, which, so there's a reason why we keep these separate, right? If I put the landing page that you need to, like, for you to use every single month, right? You're going to have seventy different copies of this landing page, you know, by a couple of years from now. You can like uncheck and not claim a landing page, but we don't always remember to do that. So if you go to this blog post, and I'm going to pop it in here one more time, and show you guys exactly what to do and where to go. If you follow what's in the blog post, I promise everything is there. So I tell you what's going on in this month's content, how it works. And then if you don't have the system yet, all you got to do is go over here to this one. And it walks you through how to set this up. And the first step is to grab your landing page, right? And that is going to be right here. And once you've done that, you can pop right back over here. And then you can move forward, whether that's April, May, June, July, etc., whenever you decide to get started with this content. The Resource Bundle, month to month, is always going to be just the the campaign. And then you could always go and get started with with the landing page whenever you would like. Okay. Can I request a topic for future training to add the Health Plans? Can you share a little bit more about that, maybe in the chat, Stacy, about what you have in mind there? Are you wanting to just maybe have a page on your site that talks about the plans? And if so, let's explore a little bit what the utility would be of having that on your site versus sending them to the page that Young Living has, that they've already created. Is there a specific benefit to to not sending them to the source material as opposed to having it on your site, right? Is there a benefit to it coming from you on your website versus sending them to the source to get that information? I'm not super familiar with the Health Plans, so I, this is an honest question. I would actually like to hear your thoughts on that. Okay. Okay, good, Donna. I'm glad you do. Excellent. How can we tell if a person has seen or clicked on something that we've sent them, such as the Tuesday Tips? So a couple of things. It depends on what, A, it depends on whether there is a lead in your system, right? If there are lead in your system within a certain amount of days since the last time they have engaged with you, you can see whether or not they have viewed your website. And of course, if they are on your list and you've sent them an email, you can see whether or not they have opened a specific email or text, and if they have clicked a link inside of a specific email or text. Now, a quick caveat here. This is not scientific. It's not always exact or super accurate. Link clicks, those are going to have high levels of accuracy. But whether or not someone has opened and viewed, sometimes you've got different devices that have privacy settings or email providers that have privacy settings that would prohibit you from knowing for sure whether or not someone actually opens an email. But the way that you can actually look at that is in past actions on your contacts. You can actually see, for email specifically, if you sent them something and you want to see if they opened it, if they clicked it, then you would be looking under Past Actions in their contact. And then the other way that you would see, if someone had maybe clicked a page, visited on your site somewhere, then that's something that's going to show up on your dashboard as as the frequently, or sorry, recently active visitors. Let me just get into a dashboard and show you here real quick. All right. So if we go right down here, you can see System Activity, Top Contacts. You can actually see if someone's clicked a link on the websites, if your website's been viewed, emails opened, etc. So these statistics you can see here. And you can see your top contacts and the actions that they've taken. And then if you actually go to that person, you can see, you know, did they open an email, which is, that's what that would look like if they did. Did they click a link in an email? I don't know that I'm going to be able to show you what that looks like here, just because I don't think I've done that recently with this test account. But yeah, you'll be able to see those things there. Okay. Did Brandy mention about doing something like that in the future? Oh, you know what? Yeah, if you want a, I don't know if Brandy, is Brandy, if you're here on the call, pop your hand up for me, let me know. And if you are, we will, we'll pass that information along. But but Brandy, who did a training for us recently and provided you guys with a wild notes webpage template, that would be a great place to go if you want like a really beautiful, like, done feature page for your website that does that. So yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure. What's an average click rate, if one exists? That's a really great question, Donna, and it varies very widely. Open rates, there are percentages that are considered industry averages. Click-through rates can vary, again, very widely based on the nature of the list that we're referring to. So if you have a list of leads, so these would be people who are not your customers. These are just people who you sign up on your website for some kind of thing, for some purpose at some point in time, right? So these could be people who RSVP'd for an online class you are hosting, or maybe they signed up for your newsletter, not your, not your customer stuff, but like lead stuff. You know, maybe they signed up to get your lead magnet, etc. A good click-through rate, industry-wide, for just general leads and and open rates for for email lists. Good is in the twenty percent range. If you're above twenty percent, you're doing great, right? Click-through rate in an email is going to be considerably lower than that. And that means that good is typically considered a bit lower than that, right? But it really, again, it's going to depend a lot. I wouldn't focus so much on what the number is as I would focus on increasing whatever the number is that you have. Right? Always be focusing on ways that you can be improving the way that you communicate so that you can get more people to engage the way that you want them to. And we always need to remember as well about quality over quantity, right? It is way better for us to have a smaller list of people who actually open and engage with us, hit reply. And yeah, so that is what we're aiming for. Okay. All right. Stacy says, okay. The health plan, oh, you think the health plans are a great lead magnet, a page you can have on your website. Do I need a link for current members with a note for them to reach out to me? If not a member, to ensure they don't get put in the pool. Stacy, do you want to chat? Do you want to pop your hand up? And we can kind of talk through this together? Be super open to that. And then, yeah, definitely, we can maybe see, I don't think Brandy is on the call here today. But that, I believe, is something that she might have mentioned, creating a paid resource for. Hey, Stacy, how are you?
I am great. How are you?
Yeah, good, good. So yeah, tell me a little bit about how you're wanting to utilize the the Health Plans on on your website.
Well, I just think it'd be a great lead magnet to get, to let people know that it is an option that Young Living or I can offer. And I just am not clear on the best way to provide that information on the website because I don't want them to just get put in the pool. And so I don't want to just, maybe I don't want to broadcast it necessarily because I want them to be a member of my team. But yet, I still want But yet I still want people to know that it's an option.
Got you. Okay, so if you're not able to, and and for good reason, not able to go into a great amount of detail. About this particular feature and there's not really action that they can take on this particular idea. Without them first becoming a member uh through you, then it would be best to maybe create something like this. That lives in your member area or something that is um not publicly visible on your website without a direct link. Right? So yeah, you you could have a page like this on your site. Um and then that's, you know, again, maybe something that you only share and show to people who are enrolled with you. So that that is something that's, you know, kind of under the umbrella of your team. Put it inside a memory area if you want to be even more protective about it. But um what you could kind of do is just weave the story of the benefits into the other points that you're making, right? So you can say when someone is um, you know, maybe on your website. As you're listing out all of these benefits that you are able to help guide people toward realizing. One of them is this, right? Or whatever you see this as being the benefit uh of. So like if you could say. Um, you know, and you could even, you know, I can help you get coverage that'll even cover the things that your insurance won't, right? Like you you could even, you could have a a little um, you know, little section that maybe even talks about like how the system is broken, if that's a passion of yours. Uh and say, you know, I found a way, right? Uh and so you you just kind of use it as a point of intrigue. So you're not talking about it directly. Um because obviously you don't want to put the cart before the horse here. You can't really talk about this until they are on your team. So we don't, because the 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 problem with creating like a website page where we say, you know, it's their choice plans or it's this, we're we're naming it. And naming it what it is so that they could go Google it and find it and do something without you. That's actually creating a hurdle for our business, right? And being able to be the ones that introduce and sign them up. That's actually a big reason why. Um, we don't generally recommend somebody just putting Young Living, Young Living, Young Living all over their website, all over their social media. Because what's to stop them from going and falling down a Google rabbit hole and deciding that A, well, this isn't for me? Or B, they wind up signing up with someone else, right? Uh so I would maybe think of a way to tell a story that incorporates uh the incredible benefit that having access to these health plans uh can provide someone. Without telling them exactly what it is. It's it's a curiosity builder. It's it's a even more of a reason for them to get on a call with you and explore their options. Does that make sense?
Love it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh but still, but still, I I do think that there is a value uh to maybe having a page that is um. Just for your members that goes into this, just like inside of the vault, you could have a a page that is just about loyalty rewards or essential awards, depending on where you are in the world. Right? Uh that's something that we don't necessarily need to have front and center for people who aren't in the fold yet. Uh but for those who are, we need them to access that information. We need them to go and learn about these things and know why they're great. Um and I would say as well, in keeping with our FAQs uh that we talked about here today and that philosophy of not being the one with the answers. But being the one who can show you how to find them, um that we create a page like this. That tells just enough of why it's important and then sends them to where they need to go to take next steps. Uh right, we're we're giving our own story, right? So think about um. We'll 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 talk about Ningxia, for instance. So maybe you love Ningxia and it's a big part of your life and it's done thirty seven different things for you. It's your hero product. You could never live without it. And you have a page. Or a a lesson inside of an online class in your member area for your members to read uh that's about Ningxia. You know what goes on that Ningxia page? Your hero story. Stories from others, but not the science, that that not a copy and paste of here are the ingredients and here's what it costs. Like that you can go to Young Living and get that information. You want to give the compelling stuff that would make them want to go to Young Living and get the rest of the information and purchase on a resource like that, right? So yes, you should have a page uh that is for your members that talks about the health plans if you're in a market where that's available. But it doesn't need to say anything that the Young Living page says about the health plans. It needs to be about what this does for you. And it needs to be uh the compelling reason, something they can identify with. You know, the reason why we purchase aside from practicality, right? Like we all need toilet paper and things to wash our dishes with. But uh and you know, glasses to drink out of. But when we make purchases of products from brands. We're doing so because there is some piece of that puzzle that that we're seeing that we see ourselves in, right? We align emotionally, mentally, uh spiritually in some way with the message that is coming from the person that we saw using it. We are monkey see, monkey do people, no matter how smart we are, right? And so what you want to be able to do if you're trying to influence buying decisions. Is to show people that people like them get the life that they're looking for, the results that they're looking for by using these products. Right? That's the compelling reason. It's not the facts. It's not the figures. It's not the ingredients. And usually it's not the science, right? It's people like me do this. People want to be a part of it in group. So if you can tell a story that shows them that people like them are using this for benefits that they care about. That's going to go a million times further than anything that just talks about a particular thing, whether that be the plans that Young Living is offering. Ningxia red or even Young Living itself, right? People like me do this. All right, let me see what else. Okay, uh is there anything else? The about swipe copy? Yeah, so um the YouTube link, let me make sure that that is. That one is working here for me. It appears to be working fine. Um but yeah, if you guys have any other questions about that, uh definitely feel free. We're here for just a couple more minutes. Uh thank you for that suggestion and um I'm going to ping Brandy and see uh if she has anything uh that she has put together. And if she has, then maybe we'll bring her back out to talk about that specifically. Um, we do have um. A lot more exciting training coming up. I am really thrilled to uh be getting requests like these from you guys. If there are others that you have, feel free uh to let us know. Um also, Julie and I will be at Aroma Sharing again this summer. So if you guys are planning to be at convention, look forward to coming to see us in the days before it. Uh so we certainly look forward to seeing you guys there. Oh, awesome. Good, Lacey, we'll see you. Fantastic. All right, so we will be back same time next week, learning about something entirely new. I hope you guys are having a great time with our done for you resources. Let us know if you have any feedback on that. Uh we are always looking for ways to improve. And of course, if you need support, support at get oiling dot com. We've got a Facebook group and let me do just one, one last little thing over here. If you ever feel like you don't know where to go for help, log into get oiling, click Success Academy. And there is a feature right here that says get help from a real person. All of these are opportunities for you to not just find. So like you could find all kinds of like me talking for hours, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours. There is me running my mouth here. If you, if you're looking for that, type in a topic, I've probably talked about it. If you want to speak to somebody, right? Whether that be via email, uh via a post. Or if you would actually just like to speak back and forth with someone, you can do that on a call like this one, that's this right here. You could get on a call with Pam. Those are even smaller group calls where you can get even more personalized attention from the jump. And of course, you could always reach out to our team, our very human team, who is always here to respond to you and get you what you're looking for. So if you ever need help, uh feel free, take up any of those options. We're here to help you. Uh whether that be to hop on a call, send you some screenshots, record a little video for you, whatever that looks like. All right. Thank you guys for being here and for being a part of this incredible community and I look forward to seeing you again next week. Take care, everybody.